Opposed, it passes, thank you.
One B, Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation by Roland Gomez.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every truth and justice for all. Dear Lord, we place our work, our, and ourselves into your hands. Anoint our creativity, our ideas, our energy, so that even the smallest task may bring you honor. Lord, when we are challenged, guide us. When we are weary, energize us. May the work that we do and the way that we do it bring hope, life, and courage to all within our organization. Bless our administration with wisdom and discernment. Our commission with commitment and compassion. Our employees and their families with courage and strength. Let our requests be heard and answered by you through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Roland. Moving on to item two, Proclamations, and we do have a proclamation proclaiming Arbor Day, and we have Ms. Hannah Marble, our urban ecologist, and the audience, and she'll be receiving the proclamation today.
Hello, good afternoon slash evening. My name is Hannah Marble. I am the urban ecologist with the City of Far Parks and Recreation, and I am here to talk a little bit about Arbor Day, what it is and why it matters. So very briefly, the title Arbor Day, the, the word arbor is the Latin word for tree, and if most of us are Spanish speakers, arbol is also tree in Spanish, so makes a little bit of sense, right? So this proclamation is an effort to celebrate the immense benefits and purpose of having trees within an urban setting. So whether that means in landscaping around a business, in other public spaces, like in our city, city parks, excuse me, it's very, very important for shade, keeping cool in our very, very hot summers, and also in your backyard, if you like to watch some wildlife, seeing some birds coming by, butterflies fluttering through the trees and hanging out on some flowers, they're really, really important. So part of my job as an urban ecologist is a little bit of science and data collection. And so I wanted to present to you guys a little bit of information that I've gleaned through some computer software about the tree canopy coverage that we do have in FAR, throw a couple of numbers at you and suggest how we can kind of improve upon what we do have in FAR, in, as it relates to Arbor Day, right? We're, we're celebrating trees. So I used a computer software called iTreeCanopy, and it's a really interesting, completely free software that anyone can use, very user friendly. You can input information and learn about how much of a piece of land is covered in tree canopy. And so I was able to define the boundaries of the city of FAR and determine what percentage of FAR is actually tree canopy. So I'll start with the sort of more impressive, bigger numbers. So roughly about forty-five to fifty percent, there's a slight margin of error, because I'm a human, I'm putting in the data, that, that forty-five to fifty percent is the amount of green space that we have in the city of FAR. So the other half of FAR is roads and urban development, buildings and other impervious surfaces. So half of our city is green space, which is awesome. A slightly, on a slightly less impressive note, about fifteen percent of that green space is actually tree canopy. And the reason why I say that is because my standards are high for what an environmentally friendly city would be. So hopefully we can raise that. And the number that the US Forest Service suggests for ideal or optimal tree canopy in the southwest region of the US is twenty-five percent. So if we can raise our tree canopy coverage by about ten percent, that would be very meaningful, and that would mean that we reap the most benefits. Healthwise, getting rid of air pollution and receiving that shade and cooling that you get inside of a city. So ways that we can do that are numerous, whether that be through tree giveaways to the, excuse me, to the public, utilizing native tree species and landscaping, meaning that those trees are from here, they'll do better, they have a higher chance of survivability, whether that be through extreme weather phenomena, heat waves, hurricanes, all that stuff we get down here. So that's just a little bit of research that I've done in my time here, and I do want to go over some of the other benefits that may seem obvious to you guys as leaders in the community, but maybe a lot of folks aren't quite familiar with when it comes to trees. So of course, trees actually help absorb human traffic in urban areas by about forty percent. So if you're often disturbed by cars driving by, horns honking in the middle of the night, sirens are a little bit bothersome in the middle of your sleep, trees can kind of help manage that sound. Neighborhoods with trees, this is my favorite number, are seven to nine degrees cooler than those surrounding. So if you've ever been in, like, far northern Edinburgh, or even far south FAR, during a heat wave, you might notice it's a little bit cooler down there. I'm often looking at the temperature reader on my car, and I can see that going up and down and fluctuating when I'm in an area with lots of green space versus an area that is a shopping center. It's hotter where there are less plants, right? They're not as absorbing as, as much heat or providing that shade that we need. Trees also provide higher property values. So if you have some old growth trees around your house, whether or not you have a lot of front or backyard, they also increase the value of your home. Green space plays a major role in improving mental and physical health. That's a given, we love our parks here, Parks and Rec Department is awesome. And planting and maintaining trees absorb carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, and it helps kind of mitigate the effects of our changing climate in the year 2022. So the reason why we're pursuing Arbor Day, aside from all of these benefits, which are fantastic and wonderful, is because FAR has been designated a Tree City USA for the past couple of years, and we want to maintain that status. And in order to maintain that status, one of the things that we have to do is celebrate Arbor Day, which we're doing through the proclamation. We need to maintain a tree board or department, which our keep for our beautiful board is servicing our city as. And we have a community tree ordinance, which you can look up online through the City of FAR website, and you can read the standards that we set for our city for tree health and maintenance care, tree healthcare and maintenance. And the last one is we have to spend at least two dollars per cap, cap, woo, two dollars per capita on urban forestry, which means that our Parks and Recreation Department spends roughly two dollars per a certain number of folks in our population on tree care and maintenance, whether that's cutting down limbs that are a danger because they're impeding on telephone pole wires, a tree that's going to fall down in the next windstorm, it's our job to assess that and make sure that they are maintained and managed. One last thing that I do want to bring up that I do think I forgot, so I apologize for that, is in the assessment of our tree canopy coverage within the city of FAR, that computer software is also really cool because it spits out some interesting dollar signs at you. So given that we have a roughly fifteen percent tree canopy coverage, the lifetime dollar value of those trees is somewhere in the ballpark of twelve and fifteen million dollars in the services that they provide for the city. So it's not just like, I really like pretty trees, they look nice in the sunlight, they also have real world impacts on both our current and future generations. So I thank the city commission for being willing to hear me out for Arbor Day, and feel free to hit me with any questions you got.
Great, thank you. Actually, a question from a previous presentation, how are you on the monarch pledge? What have you been doing for the public?
Good, so we have been doing, we've done three planting days since then. The first one saw, it was a little bit much, but it happened, about two hundred pre-K, K, first and second graders for her planting day. Whew, that was a hot day, and they, they had fun, they're little kids, they just want to touch and see a plant, so they really enjoyed it. So we've been doing some pollinator plantings. That wasn't the only group that I saw, I also saw a group of health professionals from DHR, not this past Saturday, but the one prior, at the DRC, DHR DRC, where we're also planting some pollinator gardens there. So we've done some pollinator gardens, and we are also starting on the mural at the FAR Vanguard Nature Park and Birding Center, and it looks really wonderful if y'all want to go see some cool monarchs. It's still a work in progress, but it looks awesome, and it's a, an art piece to show the extent to which monarchs migrate, all the way from Canada, all the way down to South America. So it's a really cool thing to see.
Yeah, great, good, I'm glad you're following up. Anybody have any questions or comments?
It was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very detailed, it's good. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Now the proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day has been an occasion for recognizing the value of trees and woodlands to human welfare since eighteen seventy-two, and whereas the city of FAR recognizes the value of trees as they contribute to our environment by moderating the temperature, mitigating the effects of climate change, and reducing heating and cooling costs. And whereas the city of FAR has a tradition of supporting and encouraging the plant care and health of trees throughout the community, and whereas the trees in the city of FAR increase city property values, enhance the, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees provide clean air to breathe, prevent erosion of soil, and provide shelter, food and protection to wildlife, and whereas all residents are urged to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and plant treats, and plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Elizabeto Juarez, representing Borja Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the commission, do hereby proclaim December nineteenth to twenty twenty-two as Arbor Day.
Great, alright. If you can join us up at the front.
Of course, yeah.
Sure. Freddie?
Thank you, Hannah, for all the information you provided, useful information. Moving on to item three, public testimony, Hilda, did anybody sign up? And item four, public hearings, did anybody sign up? Moving on to city manager's report, we do have the submission of sales tax collection report for December twenty twenty-two, we are ranked number six, and we have an increase of eight point seven six percent year-to-date true growth compared to last year. And Carla's here in the audience, if you guys have any questions for her on this report. And five B, submission of property tax collection report for November twenty twenty-two, collections as of November twenty twenty-two are two point four million dollars, and delinquent taxes a hundred and thirty-one thousand, and same thing, Carla's in the audience, in case you guys have any questions for her.
Is that in line with last year's collection rate? Okay. By January, okay.
Yes, and five C, events of interest, I do have a quite long list, so I'll go through them as, as quick as possible. We do want to make mention of our police department has been very busy this, this holiday season, they will have their Blue Santa giveaway on Tuesday, December twentieth, from four to nine. In this program, the, they also involve the school districts, who I, who help us identify the kids with the most needs to receive the toys that they collect throughout the, their efforts. I know it was fire department, it was EMS, and it was also the police department who, who were out there a couple of weeks collecting toys and, and tips to buy toys. So thank you guys for, for everything. I know they had their mark set at fifteen thousand, and they came in at nineteen, if I'm not mistaken, so thank you for, for all your help and your efforts. I know it's not easy being out there and taking orders, so thank you guys for everything that you guys do, and, and thank you for, for providing a kid to, a toy to the kids that need it the most. Along with that, they're also doing a bear giveaway at three different hospitals this coming Thursday, so the police department will be going to visit all the, the hospitals, or three hospitals around the area, to give them a, a bear for those kids that are sick in the hospital, and they can be at home or spend Christmas at home. This new one, this I've never, never heard, is this a new program, Chief, the Blue Guardian? Okay, okay, so for those of you like me that I didn't know about this program, the Blue Guardian giveaway, this is twelve days in which our patrol officers identified twelve families, and they go out there and they, they get clothing, shoes, toys for the family, for the kids in the family, and every day they go to each family and they, you know, they bless them with their, with whatever they need. So it's something small, but it's the community engagement efforts that we appreciate from you guys, so thank you for doing that. In addition, we want to remind everyone that we have dig the house contest going on, it is closing today at five o'clock, so if you're thinking of registering your home, make sure that you log in and, and send in your information, so it can be judged between today or tonight and tomorrow, because we will be announcing the winners on Wednesday morning. We have received about thirty participants so far, they do weekly checks, so we're waiting for the last week to see, to see how many homes register, and they can do the judging, so we can announce the winner. That winner will be announced in social media, so if you did register, make sure you stay tuned, it'll be announced at noon, actually, December twenty-first, at noon. We also have our New Year's ball drop, New Year's Eve ball drop on Saturday, December thirty-first, so we want to invite the entire community to come out and enjoy the concert that we have with the Spasmatix, we know it's a favorite, a local favorite here, so make sure that you guys come out, enjoy the concert, and ring in the new year with us here in the city of FAR. So that one, also, I have a very special person in the audience, Hilda, you can come up. We want to, we want to bring Hilda up today, I know a lot of the people here in the meeting already know Hilda, and, oh look, there's a beautiful picture out there. Hilda just finished her, her journey through STC, she obtained a bachelor's degree in operations management, she did go, she did go to school while being a full-time employee here, I, I've been there, I know the, the journey is very, very difficult, so congratulations, and we're very proud that you're here with us, and we're very happy to have you and for your contributions, and you're, you're truly an inspiration to many.
No, it was, it was kinda, it was hard, it was hard, because after thirty, thirty years of being out of school, going back, and all the things that have changed, all the technology, the classes, and I said, oh my God, I'm not gonna, how am I gonna do this? But slowly but surely, I, I went to school, it wasn't, it was, it was hard, I'm not gonna lie, it was hard, but nothing impossible. If I did it, anybody can do it. And I want to thank God for the opportunity to obtain this degree, for, I did it as a self-accomplishment for my family, and I wanted to set a good example for my kids and my granddaughter.
You are, you are a great example.
Felicity eyes, congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
And, yeah. Only gives you the opportunity, you're the ones that gotta do the work. So I'm glad you saw the opportunity and you took advantage of it, and I wish you nothing but the best in operations management, that's a pretty large field, and you did well in school as well, didn't you?
Yeah, three point eight.
She graduated with honors, yes, she graduated with honors.
And I, Annalee can be, can attest, because she would always say, hey, Hilda, you want to go to this function, you want to go to this game, I'm sorry, I can't, I have to go home and, and study and test, and I was, I would miss family functions, and I was, while I was going on vacation, I was doing homework, I mean, I'm non-stop, I, I continued, and I, I didn't stop, because it, it requires a lot of time management, having, being very dedicated, because you have to have priorities, and school was my priority, of course, my family and work, but I would always try to, to, to do everything and complete everything with time, I didn't want to procrastinate till the last minute, but I, I did it.
Good, well, Felicity eyes, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
All very proud of you.
Thank you, Hilda.
Thank you.
And we do have a couple of recaps that we want to show you guys, we have the Posada recap that we want to show everybody here in the meeting and, and those tuning in, it was a very successful event, we had close to ten, ten thousand people in attendance, so we're very, very happy to see everyone here. As always, very, very proud of everyone who helped make this event such a success, it takes an entire village to, to put an event together like this, so thank you everyone from the staff, from the community, from you guys for your support. And then we have another very short recap, today we visited nursing homes in the city of FAR, so we have a very short recap that they put together for us, so you guys can see how our morning, how our morning was. We went to go give blankets to all the elderly, and to remind them that we have them in our mind and in our heart during this holiday season. And they're beyond excited to see us there, very excited.
Well, that's why we're here, to make sure that you guys receive a little something. So it, it has a little, it is, look, get the shot. We give to a lot of people, to a lot of different individuals, and one of the populations that we have that's very important here to us in our community is our three hundred residents that live within the nursing home, so that's where the idea was born, what can we do to make them feel special?
Seeing their smile on their faces, some of them tear up and making us tear up as well, feels, feels really good, feels really special.
Just want to, just want to remind everyone that this is a time of giving, and this is, you know, a time to spread cheer, if you can, pay it forward, do, do something nice for someone else. Our mayor and the elected officials are extremely excited about this initiative, and they want for us to, to be out there in the community, and, and this is a form of community engagement, this is a population that we need to always keep in mind.
That's pretty, you guys did a great job, I saw a lot of you, a lot of you guys there.
Yes, yes, we had a lot of people.
My final, so was Wiley, or was that you in the middle? Yeah, that's what I thought. I know, big heart, that's good, and everybody else I saw, you did a great job on those videos, they keep getting better and better, the media posts and also these beautiful videos you're doing. Yeah, well, they do, great leadership, I'm glad, and I'm very, very proud of those videos, saludos monitos, and I'm sure the people from FAR are going to be very proud of the product that came out, especially of, of all the hard work that all of you guys put in, so congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, thank you, and last but not least, you guys have a, a small little award, I don't want, I don't know if you want to show it, this is just to close the year as a reminder of the great achievements that we had in twenty twenty-two, tomorrow we will be doing the celebration with all the staff that took part in the side visit, just to remind everyone, we're not done, we're still bouldering journey, we're moving forward, we're moving on, we're moving strong, and wanted, this is our last city commission meeting for the year, so wanted you guys to, to remember that we had an amazing year, and, you know, to look, look forward to a bright future.
We did, absolutely, and congra, well, this is the staff, right? Congratulations on the staff and leadership that did this, all this hard work, it was recognized by the governor's award, but it's a reflection of you and all your hard work as a team, so congratulations to you guys.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm done with my short report. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, all items under consent agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Okay, seven A, consideration action of any or resolution to accept petition for voluntary annexation, setting date, time and place for public hearing, authorizing and directing publication of the notice of such public hearing, and directing the city manager to prepare service plan for approximately seventeen point four twenty-five acres of land, more or less located at the northeast corner of South Veterans Boulevard and East Military Highway in the city of FAR extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ, Hidalgo County, Texas.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Consideration action of any or resolution cancelling, rescheduling the city commission meeting on Monday, January second, twenty twenty-three. We will be closed.
Why you guys want to be closed?
We will be closed on Monday, January first, I'm sorry, on Monday, January second, so we're setting a new date, which will be the next day, Tuesday, January third, for our first meeting in January.
Whoa, hold on, is this a holiday?
Yes. It's for New Year's.
It's the first holiday of the year.
Yes.
Alright. Any other comments? The only one, all in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Eight, eight, consideration action of any or, on request to reject all proposals for marketing services for TeamFAR.net project.
Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Eight B, consideration action of any authorization city manager to re-advertise for request for proposals, RFP for marketing services for TeamFAR.net project.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Eight C, consideration action of any authorization city manager to amend the rotation list and enter into a master service agreement with two additional firms for the construction material testing and geotechnical engineering services pool.
Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Nine A, consideration action of any on renewal of hardware and software support for network equipment for TeamFAR.net from Solid IT Networks Inc. through DIRTSO four three three nine.
Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Nine B, consideration action of any on renewal of cloud software support for TeamFAR.net from Calix.
Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Nine C, consideration action of any on renewal of cloud fiber design software support for TeamFAR.net from IQ Geo America INC.
Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Ten A, consideration action of any authorization city manager to extend service contract with Spike Sport Company from Mission, Texas, for the fleet maintenance and repair services, this is your two of three.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes, thank you.
Ten B, consideration action of any on memorandum of understanding with South Texas ISZ for usage of the sports complex parking lot at two oh one East Moore Road.
Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it passes.
Ten C, consideration action of any on a time and fee extension for construction management services for the FAR International Bridge Twin Bridge Expansion Project.
Any discussion, all in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes.
Ten D, consideration action of any on supplemental fee request for construction management services for the city of FAR citywide fiber optic broadband connectivity project.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes.
Ten E, consideration action of any authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter a consulting agreement with Patriot Strategies.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy new year. To all the employees and everybody out there, once again, thank you all for doing a fabulous job this year, like you do every year. And I want to thank you personally, from the bottom of my heart, me and my family, my two kids. I wish you all the very best. Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a second? I'm sorry. All right. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor? Opposed? It passes. We are adjourned at four thirty-one. Thank you, everybody.